Good morning, members of council and our guests. Great meeting today we're gonna have in discussion to our small coast waterfront. Before we start the agenda, is there any disclosures of conflict of interest? Seeing none noted. I'm assuming Joe, you're gonna take it from here.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I think again, as the agenda flows, we'll pass it over to Mr. Miller, who will have some introductory comments, and I think Mr. McDonald from JP Thompson will bring us through some of the presentation as well. Certainly, again, there's a number of members of administration that are on the line that will be able to answer any questions as they come up. So I'll just turn it over to Mr. Miller as we go through the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, your worship, and members of council. Just wanted to take a little bit of time today and walk through the small coast waterfront experience. Trying to accomplish two or three things here today. Number one, we're gonna go back and try and provide a bit of overview for members of council as to the background of where we've been with this project so far, bring council up to speed with that. JP Thompson, Colin and his team have put together a pretty excellent PowerPoint presentation here that he will spend some time walking council through. The other thing we were gonna do is introduce council to a new option, a phase 2B option, which would replace the phase 2B that was originally considered by council back in October, the first meeting in October. The third thing is that we would be looking for council for some direction with respect to the COVID resilient grant that's available. And the plan is to put that money towards a phase 2A and the sports zone that's currently there, and we can talk more about that as we get into the PowerPoint presentation and we get to the slide that speaks directly to that. At the end of the presentation, we'll be able to recap, certainly entertain questions from council as councils also seize in the presentation. The last slide of the presentation is the budget for the project, so we'll be able to walk through council phase one, which was the acquisition, kind of where we're at, phase 2A, what that means, the proposed phase 2B, which was at the October meeting, and if council elects to go in a different direction under the revised 2B, how does that impact the budget, we'll be able to review all of that for council as well. So that's kind of the agenda that we're looking for as part of the presentation today. At this point, I would turn it over to Colin, and he's gonna walk through some of the beginning parts of the presentation for members of council. Colin, all yours.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, Kevin. I'm just, I'll share this, start sharing a screen now. Just give me a second, and we'll bring that up. So hopefully, everyone can see that as a full screen. Anybody can't, just please let me know. So on behalf of JP Thompson Architects, we'd like to thank the town of LaSalle for giving us the opportunity to present our work debate. This is sort of a high-level overview of the LaSalle Small Coast Waterfront Experience. We wanted to step right in and start to look at some of the vision and goals, and a lot of this was based on what we did with our initial grant application a number of months ago for the town. And we really wanted to talk about the key drivers and the goals for this project and this community. Obviously, it was kind of coined the petit coat right off the bat, this notion of the small coast and this incredibly beautiful portion of what was probably originally historically a sort of a wetland area along an historical river. Part of those key drivers are four really important points that we want to get across and sort of been away, these are sort of our mission points or guiding principles. So this notion of, number one, an expanded year-round point of destination, activity hub with multi-purpose amenities centered around the heritage waterfront. Number two is an authentic site capturing the rich history and culture of LaSalle to learn about and showcase our three cultures. So this idea of our indigenous communities, peoples, our French communities and our English communities. And number three, a walkable, active and passive recreational environment linking buildings with the broader landscape. And four, a sustainable and technology-infused environment. So those are principles that we always want to sort of come back to. Every decision that gets made is sort of bounced off of these, and they really help us to guide what we're trying to do. In terms of park features, I wanted to walk through some of the things that we've been working on now. So here you see the original or the existing Marina building, Westport Marina. This is the facade along Front Street, so this kind of envisions a rebranded exterior look. So we really tried to take the envelope and work with it and really sort of develop it into a really highly multi-purpose space, one that sort of introduces a similar color palette to the work that we've done at the town, the municipal center and the main campus at the town hall. You can see there an entrance just on the right, but a series of garage doors along Front Street that allow the space to be completely opened up for multi-purpose events, whether it's markets or art fairs or special activities such as festivals, et cetera. It really provides a large, large, multi-purpose open concept space that can be utilized for a number of items. At the main entrance, we also have that sort of undulating sort of beautiful canopy, again, a sort of a metaphor to a canoe, bringing in a lot of the architectural sort of colors and textures of, again, of the work that we've done at the town hall. Here you can see sort of an inside view. So what we looked at was on the right side, you'll see those garage doors that lead us to Front Street. On the sort of middle right area, you can see that main entrance area, which takes us into the space. And along that north wall, you'll note that that's really a portion of the only intervention that's happening in the space, which is really a series of washrooms and office, a access to a upper canopy level, which, or upper mezzanine level, which gives us an opportunity to access event spaces, there's some storage space up there. And then on the far left, you can kind of see another set of garage doors, which will open us up right to the waterfront and the rest of the slip area of that Marina, that old Marina. This is a view of the west wall, so again, you see on the left that canopy that extends the entire length of the north side, sort of undulating towards the water. And then you see the garage doors, which sort of open up. We have access just on the left there with a main door that provides us access to a small space inside, which connects a kitchen or a servery. But you can see four large garage doors that sort of really open this thing up from an east-west perspective. Out in front, we have the opportunity for large events and the assembly of, you know, food trucks or of tent spaces, vendor spaces, or just general access to the slip, to the slip area. Also, in terms of features, we just wanted to highlight what we envision, the, some of the materials selections will be on this project. Integrated planting, we have a variety of paving, look and feel, so again, looking at sort of a striated paving pattern. You can see there the integration of landscape with bed, stone bedwork. You can see in the bottom right, crushed stone and sand as part of the sensorial qualities of this space, and also a way to sort of bring it back to a very naturalized environment. As well, we're looking at opportunities for porosity, so again, that crushed stone, this idea of a dog park in a portion of the larger waterfront experience, which would probably be with bark or tree chunks. We have paving stones and concrete pavers in geometrical designs that offers the opportunity to sort of mitigate our hard surfaces and maximize basically water and the porosity of that water moving back into the soil. Also, we were interested in bringing this project back, just from a sustainability perspective, back to a really sort of naturalized space. So again, one of our key drivers, the idea of bio swales, that parking lots in areas where we have to collect water or move water are done in a very naturalized way. And then obviously, authenticity and our connection to our culture, so we do have sort of huts or shelters, which will provide power, will provide data, but also will act as sort of modern interpretations or metaphors to our indigenous structures such as the wigwam. And then just in terms of the conceptual design, I'll just sort of walk you through where we're moving this, just so we can start to look at how it's been formalized. Back to the authenticity notion, so this idea of the existing shoreline shape and what we, what that offers us in terms of a starting point. So you can see here that that's sort of, the blue represents the water. Basically, you can kind of start to see these fingers that really come out. So if we look at it just as a positive-negative shape, it's quite structured, and that structure has developed over time. So we sort of look at that as a comparison against the current or the pre-contact shape, which may have been much more fluid and organic. So that's critical for us to sort of understand and bring that layer back into this project. Obviously, you know, our current access to this waterfront experience may predominantly be from the land, whereas historically, it was always from the water. Our indigenous communities, our French settlers always used this land or this waterway as a means of active transportation, driving, trade, driving movement, driving communication. And back to just this idea of the ribbon farm, planning of the French peoples in the late 1700s, early 1800s, you know, it was a sort of an important layer that we want to bring to this petit coat or this historical small coast. And so when we look at the actual site, we sort of are able to look at not only the property lines that have developed over time, but also the way they integrate with these fingers that move out into the water. So you can see that here in a very diagrammatic form. And what's important for us is because the site is so big and with the overall sort of frontage that has now been developed across Front Road, we really want to make sure that the community has access at numerous points. It's not isolated to one street or one access point or another, but this idea of, similarly, the way the ribbon farms were accessed from water, we want to access them in a similar way, almost individually from Front Road. And then in terms of shaping the zones, you can see sort of Front Road down at the bottom. We obviously have a need to or desire to retain a large sort of event space, you know, we call it sort of the festival zone or the event zone. Really important to the overall design. And then there was sort of a traditional marker, a traditional entry point, which we find is significant as well. And then on top of that, we start to develop a series of zones, which are really sort of branded spaces, and you'll see how those get developed over the course of the finer plans. So you know, this idea of a sports zone, a naturalized zone, a sort of a active-passive zone and a heritage zone. On top of, on top of that, we sort of see the striation of this this park really starting sort of at the road with some heavy planting, some heavier tree development, and then moving towards a lighter tree development, then ultimately into this sort of low and naturalized striation, which is really about the coast and about this this line or this original coastline, which, as I mentioned, was really about sort of almost a wetland in some ways. So what's interesting is that we've developed an active trail, so this notion of a bike path, which actually kind of moves up and sort of serpentineally moves through the site. We're creating bridges to access different, some of those fingers and reconnecting them so that we're not sort of stuck at the end of one. So that becomes a really sort of beautiful sort of necklace that kind of wraps up there in a way, it in a sort of memory trace, it starts to bring back that old coastline or that pre-contact coastline. So I'm just gonna turn it over to Kevin, so he can introduce slide 20 here.
Thank you, Colin. Members of council, so slide one here that's on the screen right now, that's really an image of what is in the field today. I think it really gives us a scope of the size of the property that now forms the small coast experience. If you look at the, what will be the event center or the storage, your boat storage building, that building's about 32,000 square feet, which is a significant-sized building, but it looks rather small in context of the overall property. As we can see right now, most of the activity is occurring on the south end of the property. You can see the current boat launch, the parking, Riverdance facility, the sports zone, the TD Bank, the pool, and so on. So most of the current activity and obviously is on the south end of the property with the north end more recently being purchased. Next slide, Colin. So this represents what was phase 2A that was presented to council back in October. And phase 2A at the time would have included the renovation of the event center, the former Westport building, the plaza that runs to the Marina slip. And then to the north of that would include a parking lot area that would service both the event center and the renovation or the initial phase or the renovation of the old Benoit House. Part of that phase 2A would be the extension of Ulster Street, which should extend westerly and come back into the parking area. The other part of 2A would include a trail connection. You can see it coming off of the plaza, heading southerly to the existing pavilion connecting into the parking lot. The original part of 2A was to allocate funding, and if you look back at the budget then, and the budget that's at the end of the presentation, there was $250,000 being allocated that would have upgraded the current sports zone until such time as the funding would have become available to rebuild things. As I noted in my introductory remarks, we're looking at rebuilding all of the sports fields in conjunction with the COVID resiliency grant. We're looking for council, that grant stand to be corrected as around $315,000 or $30,000. Gives us something just a little under $600,000 in total now to spend. Mr. Mayor has done some estimates on that. There is a slide a little later in the presentation that is a detail of that area, and we can speak a little more about that portion of phase 2A. What would be done, what would be, would remain, and a little more about the grant at that time. Certainly, if council has any questions along the way about any of these options, certainly feel free to indicate, and we can answer them now, or we can certainly say any of the questions until the end. Next slide, Colin. So as part of the original presentation that was presented to council back in October, phase 2B of the presentation at that time was the boat launch. Since then, the parking lot has been slightly reoriented a little more in a east-west direction as opposed to a north-south, but still, it's the same sort of budget amount. So it would have included the extension of the driveway back to the parking lot, the creation of the parking area for the boat launch itself, a small building back at that area to house staff in connection with the boat launch. Down towards the, just south of the event plaza, you'll see a small building there that is the pump station that was proposed as part of phase 2B. And you'll see that the boat slips have been removed out of the bottom half of the Westport Marina slip. That would become at least what is being envisioned right now as the stormwater management retention pond for the pump station. The trail would still connect. So that was really the limit of phase 2A and 2B that was presented to council back in October. Next slide, Colin. So after receiving some comments and talking to the CAO, I reconvened with JP Thompson to say, you know, what would, what would it look like if we included the ice feature and playground as part of phase 2B? So Colin's gonna walk through, but you can see now, south of the event plaza, what would be the proposed ice trail? It's a, it's a trail system with some landscaped islands in the center. The eastern portion towards Front Road of that would act as a splash pad in the summer, and attached to that would be a playground area. I think, Colin, we could go to the next slide now. When we first started looking at this, Peter came across a project that the city of Brampton did, and that's really what you're seeing on the screen now, is a ice feature that Brampton did, which is a skating area in the winter and functions as a water feature in the summer. So that was really the beginning inspiration to try and look at that and say, we don't, how can we make use of this for 12 months of the year? From that, we turned it over to JP Thompson, and they've come up with an interesting concept that's, as we've got a video that we're gonna show council that's in a few other communities, which is more of an ice trail as opposed to an open, more of an ice rink. And Colin, I think you can move forward and then sort of walk through the phase 2B in some more detail.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, so you can see there. Am I getting an echo or is everything okay? Yep, should be okay. Yeah, thanks, Kevin. You can see there that that's the initial idea of having a sort of a large, very organic sort of skating area that would double as the splash pad in the summer. What we did was we took a look at that and said, is there an opportunity to potentially reduce the amount of ice surface, but also increase the experience? And then tie it into our small coast landscape. So, you know, if we introduce islands, for example, we ultimately kind of create an area where we have sort of a, in this example, this specific example, about a 25% reduction in the surface area while maintaining a 6,500-square-foot splash pad, which is quite large. I mean, that's a, that's a large gymnasium in community center, for example. So that's huge. You can see the splash pad area there, just as an example in this particular one. But what it does is it really kind of changes the way you experience that skating and walking opportunities. So in the winter, it's frozen, and in the summer, it becomes a path, and it really gets just simply integrated into our overall landscape, which is really more in keeping with the key drivers and the four principles that we're trying to go back to. Here's a couple of images. These are at Storybook Gardens, just as examples of what that could look like. And so, you know, and obviously, we start to look at this sort of technical aspects of it, the notion of a Zamboni out there, the width of the Zamboni, how many times are they making a pass across that surface, you know, the sort of the optimum width, you know, roughly about 16 feet, which provides three passes. And from there, I think the town would like to show some videos. I'm going to stop sharing here. That's great, I'm just gonna share that screen again. And move to slide 32 for Kevin.
Thank you, Colin. So I think that video kind of brings to life a little bit of what's being proposed on this slide here. This actually represents what would be the full build-out of the project in its totality at the end of all of the phases. But just going back to perhaps for a second to the phase 2B concept, if you look at just south or just south of the event center, on the original 2B, there was only a single building, which was the pump house. If council were to elect this option, we would actually almost double the size of that building adjacent to the pump station, which would house the refrigeration equipment. of that uh building adjacent to the pump station, uh which would house the uh refrigeration equipment. Um that's necessary for the ice plant to uh freeze the ice during the winter. Uh small Zamboni for the cleaning of the ice, uh small change rooms and area for um people to change into their skates. Um and what would be proposed is rather than a concessionary in there is engaging a couple of vendors in the community to provide two or three food trucks. Uh which would would provide a kind of a nice authentic uh sort of carnival food that you, when you're out, when you're ice skating or you're doing splash pad in the summer that you could uh enjoy something to eat as well. So that's the uh proposal for phase two B. The slide brings sort of those two phases together. Um on the Riverdance end, uh the building that's closest to that of Riverdance Marine Slip is a new community center. That's been in the plans. What has been introduced since then is if you look where the current boat launch is, what's being proposed there is actually a sand beach that would actually enter down uh into the water. Uh there's also an opportunity to put another smaller playground in that area so that uh families could come enjoy a small beach uh with entry to the water. And also children would have an opportunity to play on some playground equipment in that space. As well as another smaller playground down that children could play on that's adjacent to the splash pad in the summertime. I think it's a a relatively successful combination that we have done with the bomber uh between the splash pad and the playground. Uh you can see a number of the trails and bridges that link along the river and through the natural areas uh that are being proposed as part of the ultimate phases that link uh the various peninsulas together and give the uh uh the community a good opportunity to link itself back to the water's edge and the uh and the Detroit River. Um so I think Colin, Kyle, or Colin, the next slide. And maybe I'll just like call and walk through this a little bit. Um this would be a a good screen for sort of some of the public uh engagement process. It really is a is a busy slide, but it points to all the various uh concepts that uh are being proposed throughout the uh project.
Thank you. So you can see just at a a high level, uh this is really the the sort of the full vision and and um it's difficult to imagine the scale of this particular property, but it's it's so large uh that that um uh there there's quite a bit of detail. Um and it's and it's often difficult to understand how actually how how big some of these spaces are, but um generally, um like, for instance, if you looked at those playgrounds Kevin was referring to, those are very, very large playgrounds. Um and and yet they're they're sort of um sort of dwarfed in the overall site. So um the the site is incredibly beautiful. Um and then when you see a slide like this, you really start to picture the the magnitude of of opportunities that exist here. Um it's so incredibly special. You can see the white um uh zones, the the large font that's that sort of defines those zones, which was part of the earlier conceptual slides. And then you can kind of see um the all the detail that runs along the the left and the right uh side of the overall park. Um uh from front road, you can you can kind of capture what's happening. So you have a commercial opportunity for commercial space. So um this idea of of promoting um a walkable street effect uh along front road, the the road dieting, you can see there in the in the road itself where we have uh left turn lanes uh and bike paths uh that you can see them in yellow. Um but along uh front, we also you also see sort of two entry beacons, which are the pinkish colors, which sort of introduce the park from from our main uh thoroughfares and also from the throw the the residential streets coming from um from from the east. Uh you'll notice as you move in, uh we're just identifying T D Bank there as as a sort of a a uh a place marker at the the front corner. Um you'll see the sport zone on the left, the large festival event center in the middle. The natural preserve uh or the very sort of wetland area or zone uh up towards the water, the the sort of leisure zone and a and the historical zone, which um you can see there, you see a series of three buildings which make up the Heritage Museum and Welcome Center. So um no, I I don't know if I I'll I'll go through all of these items, but really I I think what what is important to to note is that you really get a sense of the large promenades that take you from the front road at um you know, nearly uh six or sevens major um points into the park. So really um you can envision those as really wide spaces. They're suitable for uh emergency vehicle access. Um they're sort of, they act as our our conduits for our major circulation, but also uh for major infrastructure. Um um and they they sort of are able to, they allow us to link not only active path or a bike path um into the the uh the the coast or the the shoreline area, but it also allows uh individuals to come off of all of the um the numerous uh residential streets and not have to walk two blocks north or south to get to an entry point. Um so so they really allow immediate access for everyone. But also conceptually, they represent our our fingers or our sort of, you know, the 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 original a T coat, the French, the French ribbon farming. Some of the detail here on the next slide, you'll see this is a sort of a blow up of the of the sports zone area. You can see the commercial, the idea of having commercial at the front, which really gives the the community an opportunity to um to provide some of that um interest area, food, beverage, retail, sort of commercial. Uh you'll see the Riverdance Research Center up towards the water and then a new community center adjacent to that. And um you know, the the idea was that we could try to integrate this in with Adams Lane and create a, you know, a really um rejuvenated park uh sports zone sort of in the middle. The dark green there you see next to the middle um parking lot is uh uh one of the bioswales. So this idea of taking all of this hard surface and sort of naturalizing it. We've attempted as as best as possible to maintain all of the existing trees on the on this overall property. So everything was sort of carefully done to try to do that. Obviously, we can't um um we can't save every tree um just with respect to um providing new infrastructure and parking, but um that was the main intent. It was really about treading as lightly as possible on this. Yep.
Colin, could you go back to that slide just for a second? I just wanted to uh cover for council um on the COVID resilient grant. So um what is being proposed is rather than taking the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and retrofitting uh the existing sand volleyball courts and tennis courts. Uh what is being proposed is that we take the allocation that was in the budget together with the grant funding. And what we would look to do is uh as part of phase two A, as I understand that the grant um is is due um with at the uh twenty-first of December, I believe. And the work as part of that grant needs to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-one. So we would look to uh replace the three sand volleyball courts, the four uh tennis courts uh fully rebuild them to a new condition. Um based on some current estimates that we do, the basketball court may not be done as part of this initial grant. Uh it may be kept in its current location, upgrade a little bit to bring it up to uh uh to a little better state, uh but it would certainly rebuild those uh those areas uh as part of this grant. As Colin mentioned, um the original um proposal that was uh council saw, the commercial pieces were between a Lorye and the River Dan or the uh Westport property um north of the T D Bank. Uh what's being proposed now because of the alternative, the phase two uh B to put the ice area in is to move the commercial component uh to the uh south side of Lorye Drive. So you see here uh there's a number of uh pads uh that exists there. Um as Mr. Mars mentioned in the past, we'll just have to be conscious that a couple of those pads sit on the current, what would be the pool as part of the overall plan that would disappear. And uh would need to be backfilled appropriately in order to support those commercial pads. Um so I think part of the uh process today, we would look to council uh to endorse that component of phase two A and uh commit the uh uh the two hundred and fifty thousand from the uh the budget in addition to the grant funding uh to rebuild those uh sports courts uh in twenty twenty-one. It would obviously take uh tennis and the sand volleyball out of commission uh for the next year, but certainly come uh the twenty twenty-two season, uh they would have brand new facilities to to uh enjoy. Um if we can certainly answer questions now regarding that, or we can save them till the end, whatever you wish, your worship.
Why don't we save them?
I see the deputy mayor had a question, but we can save it now or I can do it, whatever you want.
Why don't we wait till the end? Cause um you might answer the questions prior to getting to the end.
Okay. I think we can move to the next one, Colin.
Yeah, so this is uh again a blow up of that uh that main uh area near the storm retention pond or the old boat slip area in Marina. So you can see the Marina a block uh sort of dead center to the to the uh bottom of the screen. Uh as um as was mentioned earlier, we have uh not only a pump station, but also a sort of ice uh refrigeration building in slash change room. Um you can see the gray portion around the Marina is is sort of our fire access route. Um we we have the opportunity to stage uh food trucks in that area to provide um e ease of uh community access to uh uh food and beverage. You can see the long uh skate trail that sort of meanders up there, up towards the naturalized uh finger. So that's been actually cut back and you could, if you move through the slides, you can see how that naturalized area has been been moved back a bit. And 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 so really this skate um park is sort of a a memory trace to that uh that longer uh piece of the uh of the that water that moves into the site. So you know, this notion that the water is 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 now being frozen back again, um almost like, you know, our sort of traditional hockey uh rinks in the back in our backyard. So um here you can see a lot of the detail, the the plot, the event plaza in front, which which you saw in one of the earlier images, really an opportunity to have all kinds of multipurpose uh spaces and and uses. Um the the parking area, um you can see how it's been sort of divided. It's not just a large um sort of uh commercial retail parking lot style. It's really about uh or community space style uh that you might have a large community center. It's really been subdivided up and it's been elongated in these sort of finger-like moves that are are back to the ribbon concept. Um and 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 divided by bioswales. So we have the opportunity for people to walk up through there. So really, it's 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 a sort of a low speed, really um highly naturalized parking area. And what we're trying to do is bridge the space between the the museum or the Marina and the museum or the heritage zone. So we have opportunity for uh, you know, not only accessible parking um to those spaces, but a a way to interconnect uh between the two. Uh you can see the bike path, another important feature, the bike path that runs in the bottom right of the screen that comes off the street, which you see the yellow bike pass on uh front road. Um that moves up along the access at ulster into the site and and you can see it sort of snake up uh to the top. Uh and that sort of moves up across the shoreline and back down uh uh south of Lorye. And I'll I'll just move to the the next slide here, um which really sort of focuses in on on the shoreline, the beautiful, incredibly beautiful, naturalized shoreline that you have. Um you can see the yellow uh little uh infotainment huts, we call them, or shelters where we we know we've got a refuge from the sun. In the summer, we have refuge from the wind. In the winter, we also have access to power. It's a a sort of acts as a um a kiosk or a trailhead. So we we have an opportunity to to talk about our history at those points and introduce technology in a way that sort of gives us a sort of a live tour of what's happening. Um you can also see in the upper left where you see shoreline detail, we'd like to introduce a um a a water's edge beacon. So this idea of of a sort of a um a more totemic uh um feature that sort of creates an axial connection from uh Lorye up. And we also have one uh uh at the Marina space, but this idea of creating a beacon that offers us um a chance to connect with the water and and um you know, uh potentially have weather stations, et cetera, all part of the experience. You can see bridge, in this particular case, bridge one on the far left, but bridge two, bridge three, and the land bridge four, which um creates uh that active path, a a part part of that act path and also delineates the the slips and the Marina from the storm retention area.
Uh now for the fun part. So I think if I I can just uh review your worship with council, this uh the spreadsheet. And I think certainly the C O and uh and Mr. Langwa may be available to supplement, but I think if you take look a look at the first uh four columns that are on that spreadsheet, phase one, phase two A, two B, and the total of the two phases, that is consistent with what was presented to council uh back uh in uh October. So you have the approximate uh eighteen million dollars that is there to um to do the uh first phase, which was the land acquisition and some general landscaping. And then to complete what we've outlined is uh phase two A and the two B from the October meeting. Um with the introduction of the revised uh to be uh the next two columns, you'll see the adjustment the phase two and the revised phase two. Um down, uh the biggest expense you'll see in that line is the five point five million dollars uh which we see for the uh multipurpose water and skating feature. Um I noted in the report that we haven't really done a a a true costing allocation for that, but we did uh have a good look at and Brampton was kind enough to share with us the uh their project and the uh the spreadsheet for their budget. Uh they they uh had a budget of about seven million dollars, uh which included a bit larger ice surface. And a substantially, I would say, larger building. Um we're gonna be able to take advantage of building onto a pump station. Um uh making it larger as opposed to creating a new building. So having a a decent look at the that budget compared to what we are looking at, we think that the five point five million that's being proposed here is a is a fairly realistic uh a budget to start with, to go forward to look at this proposal. You'll note that in the revised phase two A, it's just a slightly higher. It's about eighteen point three million. Uh we recognize that we didn't want to breach uh the original concept of uh the eighteen million mark that was presented on October. So we've gone back through the budget and you'll see there in the adjustment lines where we've tried to make some amendments uh to the project uh in order to keep it at that budget mark. Um you'll also see in that line, the three hundred and thirty-five thousand near the bottom for the COVID resilient grant. That is what would be added to the two fifty uh to give us the five eighty-five that you see in the budget line to rebuild uh in the sports zone area. Uh the balance of the uh the sheets or the stormwater, um perhaps Mr. Meyer or the C O can speak to that a little more. Uh but again, that's consistent with where we were uh back in October. And certainly since that time, uh we certainly got the good news in the announcement of the National uh Disaster Mitigation Grant that is going to be uh beneficial and assisting uh in the development of the stormwater management or not only uh this uh project, but along the front road area. The balance of the spreadsheet uh sort of in the blue captured area. Um I don't know that we'll spend a lot of time on, but it certainly identifies that this is certainly a multi-phase project. It identifies sort of the end project number, which is consistent with sort of where we were with the grant. Uh but those uh phases could change depending on this or future councils and where uh where they want to uh um go with the project, how much they want to spend on the project, reallocate funds for the project. Uh so those those phases and and what's identified could change uh depending like, like I said, on this or future councils uh desire to move the project forward. So I think with those comments on the budget, if there's something else, uh perhaps the finance team or the C O or Mr. Meyer would like to add, uh they could certainly do that at this point.
I could add cool comments if you'd like, Kevin. Uh can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Dale.
Okay, sorry. Uh just this just kind of ties into yesterday's budget session um where we talked about uh continuing to build up the master plan. Um this this phase one, phase two A and phase two B fit right into uh Um this this Phase One, Phase Two A and Phase Two B fit right into uh what was accomplished yesterday and approved yesterday. So um over the next uh four years, we're going to continue to build up that allocation. And also, when we look at the, we talked about the two different debts that would be issued um as part of Phase Two A and Phase Two B, the first being the seven million debt over approximately twenty-five years. And then um five million dollars of debt over five years, which we can um we can uh reissue every five years. Um and as you can see, the different phases, Phase Three up to Phase Eight is on average approximately five million dollars each. So that will allow us, if we don't receive any grant funding, to continue to move forward with these various initiatives. And then all along, as uh different grants become available that qualify, we're definitely gonna um probably, this will probably be an area of focus on those grant applications moving forward.
Sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
But just one other note, I I would I would bring to council's attention. Certainly, this is the uh the capital side of this uh uh expansive project. Uh there will be uh operating implications as well that council should be aware of. Although the programming of the uh Event Center, um the museum hasn't really been discussed in detail. Uh we are capturing a site now of some sixty-five plus acres. There's a lot more grass to cut. Um there will be programming, so ultimately, there will be uh some operating impact to the budget uh in addition to all these capital features that you're seeing as well.
Thank you, Kevin. Joe, is there anything you'd like to add? Or Peter?
Uh no, I I think that uh Mr. Miller and Mr. Langway's uh captured the essence of the kind of long-term financial planning that we have. Uh I I do think that, uh again, as Mr. Miller uh mentioned, the the timing of Phases Three to Eight, or even how those are structured, are very much flexible at this point in time. And uh in some ways, grant-dependent, but we do have plans in place to get us to the finish line uh of the entire project. I I would also, you know, just maybe point counsel back to uh when we started the Volmer uh some twenty-five years ago uh with the financial planning of that, um we we knew that it was going to be a multi-phased approach. And we did quite a bit on the first phase and then slowly brought things on uh over the subsequent phases. So uh you know, again, that when I look back at the Volmer and I I think about the land, starting from the land purchases right up to the construction of the actual center, to the soccer fields, to the baseball diamonds, to the trees and and so forth, and even to the the construction of Lorient, for that matter, uh the first leg there. I mean, when I total all those numbers up, we're probably in very similar num- numbers that we see here. Uh so I as much as, you know, sometimes, you know, again, I take great uh great comfort in the small version uh spreadsheet that we have here. Uh but uh in some ways, I I I'd look back and and think, you know, this is very sim- a very similar process that we followed with respect to the development and eventual construction and implementation of the uh of the Volmer Center, from construction to operational implementation and so forth. So uh it's something that we we have successfully done in the past, and I would suspect that, uh you know, it'd be nice if we got a little help from uh uh from senior senior levels of government, uh and we have on the disaster mitigation and adaptation and adaptation fund with respect to the stormwater management side of things. But uh it'd be nice if we got a little bit of help uh from that side. But we are planning that uh at some point, uh it may take a little longer than we anticipated if we're we're doing it on our own. But uh but it is uh it is uh something that we see coming into fruition. Uh just uh again, to echo the note, uh the note from Mr. Langways from yesterday, as well as Mr. uh Mr. Miller from today. Again, our anticipation is that this will likely have a million-dollar operating budget when all is said and done. Uh and that's, you know, again, when we look at the uh the the Volmer Center, there are more opportunities for revenue genera- generations at the Volmer Center. But the the Volmer Center on rough numbers is about a four-million-dollar budget with a uh two-million dollars or two-and-a-half million dollars of revenue coming in. Uh so again, this is where we are today. Um you know, there are, there are numbers built into our budget currently that deal with some of the grass cutting and maintenance in those areas already. Uh but I think, you know, as as time goes on, we can expect that this will be a large, a large factor of our budget as, you know, once it gets fully developed. So other than that, though, I I think we do have some uh some proper and stable planning, uh financial planning in place uh to deal with that as we go forward. Uh and and certainly, the phased approach helps in trying to, you know, put the, you know, try to eat this moose on a on a on a bite-by-bite basis, as opposed to trying to get it all at once.
Thank you, Mr. Melissa. That's a new one, eat the moose one bite at a time. But before we go to questions, um I don't know, who can take that slide down, then I can see everybody, because right now I can't. Thanks, Colin. Thank you. Okay, um just some comments. I don't know how far back, Colin, you went to find that island on uh, it's it translates to Pig Island. When you you had, what slide is that, twelve, I think?
The historical photo.
Historic, okay, well, back in the day that you needed after.
Yeah.
I thought you made that up, Pig Island, that's a good one. I like your idea of the naturalization with the bioswales. That reminds me of um where the heck it, not Auburn Hills, Michigan. What do you get? Help me out here. What's the name of that town where everybody goes now? Miss where Michigan is?
Uh Ian Arbor.
Thank you, Ann Arbor. I had a brain fart, thank you. And if you go around there, they do a lot of that bioswales in the parking lots. And uh it's it's a good idea, smart. Um thank you, that was a very thorough presentation, Kevin and Colin. I can see where your gray hair is coming from when you do all the thinking on these uh this developments. It's great. Okay, um I'm gonna open it up to, if I can change my screen here. Council questions? None. Okay, let's go with it. Sorry, Deputy Mayor Milos and then Council Renault.
Thank you. Um I have a few questions. Is it best just to kind of go through all of them at once, or?
Go one at a time.
Well, okay, so my first question, obviously, I'm more in favor of the skating rink option that was presented to us when we built our civic center. That was something I was hoping we got to do there, so I'm very excited to see this. Um and crazy enough, I found the one in London about a month and a half ago. Um and I was thinking taking my family there and thought it was just the coolest feature to be able to offer in a municipality. So I was so excited when I saw the presentation. Um my question is, is if we go with that option, the Marina that's currently there, the boat slips would still be operational? Yes?
I'm saying yes.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
So if we go with the skating option, as our, instead of focusing on the boat ramps right now, will the boat ramps that are currently in use still be in use for years to come, or how how would we operate that?
The boat ramp would stay in its current uh use until such time as uh the next phase develop, the new boat launch. And then it would be uh decommissioned. So uh you would uh have the Event Center, the ice rink beside it, but then you'd still have the boat launch in the large parking lot off of Lorient.
Um next question. So my next question was with the pool area. Um I don't think I realized we were removing the pool, or is that new? Maybe, I don't know. Um so with the reconstruction of that area for the sports zone, would the pool be coming out soon?
Uh as part of the the way that the it's laid out, if um trying to you're, the answer is no. Um if you look, and I can uh refer back to the slide, but there's sufficient room in the plan now that the tennis courts uh can be built. The sand volleyball can be rebuilt, the pool, the pool house, the playground, and the tennis court would stay in its current location. Um only at such time as we saw need to move forward with the uh commercial component. Then uh in its current location, then the pool, the pool house, the playground, and the tennis court would then be uh demolished and removed. But in the current Phase Two A and the current Phase Two B, uh the pool would stay.
Okay, my final question.
Crystal, just before we ask that one, Joe wants to add.
Just on the on the sports zone, just uh the only thing that that we would, that would be affected by the the work that done is done on the sports zone would be, council will recall that there is a baseball diamond that's right at the corner of Lorient and Adams Lane, which I think frankly speaking is used more for parking than for baseball, for the most part. Uh that that would be eliminated, so that there will be a change in use in that area as well. Um so that would be again, part of that process as we go through reconstruction. But the pool should be, should be able to remain, you know, in its status uh as 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 it normally would be.
Okay, and then my last question was, um with the tennis court area, have we considered maybe putting one a pickleball court, just to make sure we offer sports for all ages?
Who's who's gonna take that? Peter, go ahead.
Um certainly, um I I I think the town has done a really good job over the last few years with pickleball. Uh certainly, we've introduced uh, we've taken tennis courts out of uh play at Marquette and introduced pickleball. Um we've also constructed three brand-new pickleball courts that weren't previous there in Heritage Park. So I think the town is doing a great job on providing those opportunities for pickleball. Um really, the uh the essence of uh the tennis community is that they are looking for something with respect to tennis. There is a possibility of doing multi-use courts, but again, the the requirements and the the dimensions and the the nets do become problematic from time to time. Uh certainly, they are different dimensions, different uh uh layouts uh for the uh for the uh courts themselves, and certainly the nets are different as well. So it would really require um trying to pick out in what we wanted to do from a from a permanency standpoint with respect to providing these services. But certainly, um there's there's plenty of opportunities right now within the town for pickleball. Um we have really done a a a great job with respect to expanding that service throughout the town with some brand-new facilities for uh tho- those particular users.
Thank you.
Just, I'm gonna piggyback on that uh before we go to Mr. Renault and then Mr. Carrick. Um Mr. Meyer, do you know, if I asked you how many pickleball courts we have in relation to tennis courts?
I want to say they're roughly equal right now. Um I I would say, I I believe we have about six or seven pickleball courts, and I believe we have about um six tennis courts right now. So I I believe it's about equal, and that's discounting the tennis courts at uh River Canard Park. Uh so again, that's a joint facility between uh two municipalities, but I think we're pretty much equal at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Um Mr. Renault?
Thank you, worship. Um I have a couple. First of all, I think uh the pool uh answer was taken care of by Deputy Mayor Milos, thank you. Um my question is for um parking. Um I've gotten a lot of questions about the boat ramp relocation and the ability to park. Um it seems like there there's no major problem with parking through most of the year uh in our current location. However, um in the hot times and the in the in fishing season, we have a couple hot months where where we're kind of jammed up for parking. And uh recognizing that they're using not only the lot uh that we have put there now, but they're also overflowing sometimes onto the grass and sometimes um over to Riverdance. I'm wondering, how does the new parking situation um compare to the old parking situation for for number of boats and trailers? And um I understand that there'll be some overflow parking uh on on some natural areas there. If we're going to do that, is there any plan to uh build up the base or anything underneath the the ground um so that we don't end up with big ruts and things like that, um because that's typically a very wet part of the year, so.
Mr. Miller?
Uh certainly to the question, um the amount of parking right now, um I had a meeting with the Parks and Rec staff um to, you know, what's the existing use, how many do you need? I think what is shown on the uh Slide Three, um I don't know if council has a hard copy of the uh presentation in front of you, but on Slide Three, you'll see uh there's, that's generally what is currently on the hard surface right now uh with the existing ramp. Um certainly, there's opportunity uh directly to the uh east of that um sort of between the access route uh to the parking area and the canal. Uh that can be used in the grassed area for overflow. We can certainly look at opportunities. I think if you go back to one of the very first slides that Colin showed that had the porosity type uh opportunities, where you can put in paving stone with grass uh growing between it that provides you with more of a grass look, but gives you a a hard base opportunity to park on as well without creating those ruts you're talking about. So I think there is opportunity to the east of that to provide for some overflow parking. And I think there are landscape materials, uh maybe Colin or Peter could expand on, that you can put in that area that that uh function not as necessarily visually as a hard space, but uh you can park on.
Peter?
Um certainly, just to build on Mr. Miller's uh commentary there, uh certainly, we we are trying to balance um providing some sort of naturalized en- uh environment out here versus um hard paved surface um in trying to uh do our part in terms of environmental consciousness. Um so certainly, um as Mr. Miller noted, there is opportunities to do uh in in, I'll I'll use, lack of a better term, reinforced turf. Um whether it's brick pavers, whether it's actually geogrid just underneath the surface, uh there is a a lot of great opportunities to allow for those types of activities to occur and utilize it for overflow parking for both, you know, for the for the matter of of the couple months of the year that we're we're really busy with boats and trailers, uh it certainly will provide that. But even even so, uh that would probably provide opportunities for when we're having summer events that, you know, if if we don't have enough parking for summer events, it would allow us to expand some parking into some of those areas. So uh certainly, those are those are really good opportunities that uh we continue to explore as we continue to get through uh through this process.
Thank you. Mr. Renault?
Um thank you. So I'm I'm just not quite sure, um in that answer, does that expand upon uh overall from what we have now?
On the hard surface, particularly where it's asphalt, they are currently equal. Um so certainly, um from from um the equity standpoint uh with respect to what's available on asphalt, they are going to be equal uh with respect to overflow. Uh again, they used to, uh what what they do is they park all through and behind the current um um washroom facilities through that park area. Um in in, again, it's hard for us to get a magnitude of what that overflow will be. Um there may be, there may be a need for us to start to restrict, and and it it basically becomes a first serve, first serve uh first come, first serve opportunity. But certainly, um I think we could probably pave the entire site, and we still probably wouldn't have enough parking um if we went through that through that opportunity and through that analysis. So there's gonna have to be a balance in in a uh in a will to kind of work through what is appropriate and what should be provided. So certainly, we continue to kind of look at that as part of the overall plan and try to in in institute a vision that would pr- still provide a park setting in the context of what we're looking at providing at this location.
Thank you, Peter. Um my next question, um a lot of people, um this isn't necessarily about our decision today, but it was presented um about the pad locations uh moving over. And I'm wondering, I see ten in the diagram. First of all, approximately, what what size are those pads? Um I'm sure they're a type of standard. Um and um and now, uh based on further questions, I I see that those are probably going to come later in the project. Um probably six, seven years down the road. I just want confirmation of that.
Mr. Melissa, or?
Certainly, I I can start, and then I think Mr. Miller probably and Mr. McDonald might have some more uh commentary. So, you know, moving the uh moving the the commercial area away from, you know, this the area in between Lorient and the Westport Building, um and moving that towards um uh Adams Lane and and that area between Adams Lane and Lorient. Uh again, from a a size perspective, I think the intention would be to create to create uh structures there that can be uh can be adapted to whatever size is required. So I'm not sure that there's necessarily a standard size that we would have, uh much like uh a some of the mall units that you see uh even in the town center. Uh, much like uh, a some of the mall units that you see, uh, even in the town center. Off of Malden, they do make adjustments as as needed, and that also even happens at the Windsor Crossing's location as well. So I I would imagine that that would be part of that process. Uh, I guess in terms of timing, uh, much is going to depend on a a bit of the public consultation in terms of. Uh, the aquatic feature in term and and how that will evolve. Um, if um, if council elects to change directions and move more towards. The water and skate feature as more of the priority as opposed to the boat ramp, if that's the direction. Uh, then, uh, again, they're probably through the public consultation, there should be some some conversations regarding. Uh, is a splash pad an equivalent substitute to the pool? Is it not? Is there a requirement for a pool, uh, you know, formal, traditional pool? Or or what we do on that side of things? Uh, so once we get that uh, sort of settled in, I would say that the commercial would then follow uh, at that point in time, so. Again, the the timing of the commercial is somewhat flexible, uh, and I would imagine that. Uh, that is one area where um, some of the. The, you know, again, I, you know, where I liken some of our advancements in uh, in future phases. Uh, may be linked to uh, funding availability and or grants. Uh, that would be an area where the funding availability could come from the actual tenants themselves. In terms of rental uh, revenues and things of that nature, so uh, that may be some opportunities with that uh, as well, so. Uh, again, there is more to talk about in that area, but uh, certainly, uh, from a timing perspective, it will be. It 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 is much more flexible and fluid than perhaps some of the other uh, amenities that uh. Uh, that are being proposed for the entire site upon full completion, so. Uh, maybe I'll I'll turn it over to Kevin and and Colin if they have any additional comments with respect to that.
I think from a uh, size perspective, I think what uh, Colin had shown there is just sort of some individual pad opportunities. Um, this could also be viewed in a bit of a a three P opportunity. Um, that you could engage the private sector to come in. I think the municipality would want to keep some. Control over the situation, because I I expect we would want to. Want to see some uses that are compatible. With with what's being proposed as part of the whole uh, small coast theme. As opposed to just some trinket store per se, so I think, you know, doing that. P three thing where the private comes in, they've got some cash to do some of the building. The town has a part partnership in the property as well. Uh, I think those can work well. As far as the timing, some of it could be driven. Um, obviously by the private sector, I'm sure that if they knocked on council's door tomorrow and said they had this great project. It's something that the town would look at more seriously, otherwise. As the CEO indicated that, you know, it could be a little little more time in coming to fruition. But they, as as far as the individual sizes, they can be combined, can be bigger. It's it's really going to be driven a little more by the private side um, as to how it it goes in the future.
Colin, did you want to add something?
Yep, uh, I think I think everything's covered, just from a dimensional standpoint, I think we've got uh, we've got ten shown. And the idea was that uh, you know, they're they're sort of moved up uh, towards the street, so they become very walkable and approachable. Uh, hopefully, uh, patios along that street, in terms of sizes, what's shown there are roughly about uh, twenty-five by fifty. And so again, with a demising wall, those could be uh, divisible or not divisible, they could be e- expanded or not expanded. But again, as as uh, Mr. Miller mentioned, I I uh, something, something compatible with the overall theme, it would be perfect. And obviously, having an opportunity to have rear patios on the on the sort of the the west side uh, is huge, because um, that gives you a a a chance to to sort of uh, integrate. Uh, with the sports zone.
I think it's it's a great opportunity, and and I think I'll take this time to just to mention. I personally have been bidding, been receiving phone calls from commercial. Restaurants, I won't say who or what type, they want to come in. No questions. They said, when you're ready, let us know, and I said, well, you're on the list, we'll invite you when. Public consultation comes, so. Tad pads might be enough, because rumor has it JP Thompson's moving. And we're gonna put condos up top, so they can live and work right there in one spot, so. I think Larry will like if we put uh, condos upstairs, that's uh, kind of the where the the way we're moving. So I I would say to council, don't be surprised if we run out of commercial space and the old um. The house, I can't think of their last name now. We may be putting commercial there as well. That that is just for diagram purposes, I would assume, correct, Colin? Kevin?
Certainly, there's an opportunity um, to expand those commercial units uh, further south, um, the spaces there, um. I think as as uh, Colin had indicated earlier, we were trying to save a lot of the mature trees. But also, we indicated that we know that we can't save everyone, um, but there's no doubt there's an opportunity that. Um, the other property, the municipality required, uh, could also uh, be engaged for some commercial opportunities as well.
Perfect, thank you. I I know Anita's gonna find a bunch of tenants, real si- real quick, when this starts going open, all her friends are gonna want to come to La Salle, right? Okay, um, Mr. Renault, are you done with questions? I believe you are.
Um, yes, I can be. One small comment for administration, when we move to the public consultation. Sessions, um, if there is any historical data as to the use of that pool, it would probably be helpful. Um, I don't, in in today's climate, I I have a pool in my backyard, many of us have pools in our backyards. However, I'm sure there'll still be a small contingent that will be looking to keep that pool. Um, if we had any kind of historical data as to how many people have used it. And if it's a declining number or increasing number uh, in the last number of years, I think that would be helpful for the engagement process.
Good point, but I can tell you, I'm also getting complaints that it's too close to the road. So it might have to be moved if we keep a pool. Okay, next up, I have Mr. Carrick.
Thanks. So, as I'm looking through, I I agree with the the deputy mayor that um. The water features are an awesome asset, and I think uh. The skate park with the plant and the uh, addition of tying it into the pump. Helps, and I think the usage that we already have there, the structure that's already in place as far as the boat ramp goes. It's already there, so we continue to, can continue to utilize that as we continue to move from north to south as we build this out. And I agree with uh, down the road, we need to look at the pool. We also need to look at uh, development, and I think going from north to south, or south to north, sorry. That helps bring that online, maybe a little quicker, so we can offset some of the costs as far as the commercial upfront. Um, as far as the uh, the boat ramp and the overflow, I think part of that, a lot of that, at least what I've seen was that um. We didn't charge this summer or this spring. Because the COVID was free, so that really added to the amount of volume and traffic that was there. So I think with the overflow with Peter and then Kevin had talked about that, help offset the majority of that. And I'd certainly support that uh, grant to uh, fix up the tennis courts and uh. Um, the volleyball nets. So from my perspective, uh, I'm I'm in favor of moving it toward the ice feature. I just, my question is. What timeframe are we looking for with all this excitement as far as being able to provide those sections of what we're going through with?
Kevin, Peter.
Well, from a uh, from a timing perspective, um. The JP Thompson, we're pretty close to going out to tender for the uh, renovations of the event center. Um, as part of two A, as part of the volleyball courts and tennis courts. Uh, as part of that grant, that money needs to be spent by the end of next year. So that would be undertaken uh, sort of immediately in twenty twenty-one as well. Um, we're also starting to do some planning uh, around the uh, the museum. And uh, hopefully, back to council with some options on that. I know Colin's team is working on that. Kind of as we speak, uh, we're also looking at uh, applying for a grant. Uh, through the federal government, the 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 Heritage Fund. Uh, there's an opportunity to submit an application, get matching dollars uh, for that, uh. I think the overall budget to bring um, the lie or the museum on board is a little over six million dollars. Uh, we've allocated two at this point, that'll start. The inside of the Benoit House and get it going. Obviously, if we could. Uh, put our best foot forward and be successful on the on the heritage grant, that would give us four million dollars uh, to bring that project forward. Um, we would love to put the trail in to connect sort of the north to the south. As part of the initial timing, I think what's gonna be a little longer as part of phase two B. Uh, the ice rink, um, the water splash pad is not gonna be a twenty twenty-one project. Uh, that's likely gonna be at least twenty twenty-two. Uh, much of that is gonna be dependent. Upon the uh, process, and Peter can talk a little more about this as far as the stormwater management plan. That Stan Tech is working on, um, once that gets approved, we'll know exactly for sure about the uh, pump house. Uh, when it's built, we put the addition on for the ice plant. Uh, we're gonna try and marry all the hydro coming into one building, one generator to get some synergies around. The whole development of that project, so. I believe that by the time we get all the studies approvals at environmental assessment done for the stormwater management plan. You're gonna be pushing well into twenty twenty-two uh, to look at something along that line. Although we do see uh, progress on some of that in twenty twenty-one on the event center. Uh, the sports zone and perhaps at least the beginning stages of the Benoit House and parking area. Not sure if that answered your question.
And no, that's good. Just further, so if we say we we committed to the ice plant in that section of it, that would. If you look at slide three, the boat ramp, that section over there. And we saw the boat ramp we're using for maybe future upgrades or whatever, would that free up that area maybe to change depending on public consultation? Or are we looking pretty much to say that that might be what we're looking at now? I'm just throwing that out there. So as we do the first phase, then we move it over, we get the public consultation going, and we get a lot of input. We're free to maybe move some stuff around, does that make sense?
I think certainly as part of the public consultation, I think what we're presenting to council is some options. What your preferences are, but certainly, we're gonna be going out to consultation um, by the mid to third week of January. Um, we're not gonna, we are likely gonna move forward with the inside. Of the event center, we don't see a lot of what's happening inside changing, but certainly what's happening outside. Recognizing, even if we were gonna do the boat launch, just to do the. Um, environmental studies that we're gonna need to do to take care of. The endangered species permits from ERCA, permits from M and R F, permit permits from DFO. To get access into the canals and those things, you're not even gonna see the boat launch uh, is is a twenty twenty-one project either. So I mean, that's even being pushed to twenty twenty-two at the earliest, even to get all the approvals that you need. I know back in October when we spoke uh, to um, those issues, one of the issues that was raised is, you know, let's not wait. To get that part of the process going, uh, just a little update to council. Um, Stan Tech has been doing some background work, uh, they've had their both terrestrial. And aquatic uh, biologists on site already, they've done some preliminary uh, work. We expect memos back from them uh, in the early part of the new year on their findings. So we are moving forward uh, uh, to do that, um, just as a note, as as part of phase. Uh, to be, um, moving forward, even if we select. The uh, ice pad and ice rink as the option. Uh, what we would look to do is fill that backyard where the boat launch would eventually go. And get fill in that area, uh, level grade and seed it, get it as an area that can start being cut. Uh, we don't want it obviously to grow too much back to its natural state, or that will cause us issues down the road, so. Uh, even part of that phase two, we'd like to go back and get that fill start, starting to come in as well. But we are starting to get some of those permits, because we just realize how long it takes to get uh. Approvals through a number of those agencies for the uh, various projects.
Hey, so just one more call, I just wanna make a comment.
Yep.
Uh, so again, I'll reaffirm to B point two, the ice plant is my my preferred option. And also, I agree with the mayor, I've been approached myself about, uh, I think commercials are gonna go a lot faster upfront than we think, that'll be a a pressure zone. So and that's not a bad thing to have, thank you.
Kevin, just a a note on um, who we have to work with. Peter will tell you, ERCA is great to work with, they're really uh, helping us along and all the projects we need. Um, Joe's laughing, Peter's not. Uh, councillor Deserly.
Thank you. Um, just a few comments. First of all, I I do like the overall look of it, but I have, as I, there's a couple of questions. Um, again, I've been approached about restaurants. Um, as you mentioned, Mayor Bondi, there are a lot of people that are looking to have something not a chain restaurant open down there. I was kind of hoping we'd have it closer to the water, uh, because we've got such a beautiful view, however, um, that's a, that'll be a work in progress. Um, we have lots of area for use. I'm wondering about washroom facilities. In the park areas, will that be, is that something that we've thought about using? Um, and as well, behind the houses on Adams Lane, having lived in that neighborhood. I know the concerns with the park, and I'm afraid with growing it to what we want to do, that there might be more um. Room for objection, can we put in extra trees along that side of the park, along that? That would be the south uh, side of the park, um, so that maybe that would help a little bit. And um, those are most of my questions, um. I I do like the idea of the the ice and the splash pad, I think that's a great way to go. I have seen it in London, and it really is, as the deputy mayor said, it's really fun to see, and so many people get to use it. And if we put the right um, facilities in to maintain it and keep the ice, I think we should be in good shape. So if someone could just answer about the washrooms and the extra trees, I'd appreciate it.
Kevin.
Certainly, as as uh, as the park expands and grows, uh, when the uh, when the boat launch area would be developed. Uh, there is a a building that's being proposed down there that would house um, offices for staff, but would also. Uh, provide washrooms uh, for the public, um, part of the longer term is um. And likely come out as part of the uh, public consultation is the use of the uh, sort of the other half of the. Marina slip for transient boaters, so we would obviously provide uh, washroom facilities for the public, for the staff, for the boaters. Down in that area. On the other side of the property, towards the existing boat ramp. When that's redeveloped and the uh, uh, sort of beach area playground area goes in there, there would be washrooms uh. Constructed in that area, obviously, we would need change rooms uh, for people and washroom opportunities. Um, when the community center is reconfigured, there would be uh, washroom opportunities. And we've also discussed about a small building down in the sports zone area. That uh, people using those facilities uh, would have access to washrooms as well. Now, those won't all be constructed in the beginning, but certainly as time goes on and those zones are developed. Uh, we would recognize the need to provide uh, those types of uh. Washroom opportunities to to individuals. We may be even able to to incorporate them, I could look to uh. Peter and Colin, but we have those info um. Areas that look like the the former Wigwam that were in to be interpretive centers. Um, sort of data, data port centers, uh, we may have opportunities in strategic locations. To put some washroom opportunities there as well.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, and the other question you had as far as the trees, certainly, we would be open uh, to planting trees throughout the site, uh. Where it would make sense, that's not gonna interfere with uh, either the programming, construction, or those types of things. But certainly, uh, uh, planting tree opportunities on the park uh, is never a bad thing.
Okay.
Did Peter or Colin want to add something before we go to councillor DiCio Spagnolo? Peter.
Um, certainly, um, the washrooms have always been a a topic of discussion, and and certainly, there's gonna be washrooms in the event center, and there'll be washrooms over by the uh, proposed splash pad area as well, so. There, I think we have a a number of areas um, covered with uh, with washrooms, and and certainly, as we continue to grow and expand, those will be reviewed. Uh, with respect to the residents uh, in that area, um, fronting onto Adams Lane. Certainly, existing today, the the tennis court is pretty close to their back uh, to their back propylites. If you look at what is proposed in the ultimate buildout, uh, they are regaining all of that as grass space, um, so certainly. Um, yeah, there is a proposed, uh, there is a proposed uh, basketball court going up closer to Adams Lane in that area. Across from Riverdance, but they will be regaining at least um. across from Riverdance, but they will be regaining at least um sixty to fifty, fifty to seventy feet of grass area to remove. And certainly, um, that that does provide an opportunity to increase our tree cover at those areas because we will be removing the older tennis courts and and restoring that back to a grass surface. So there's opportunities to do stuff in that area. Um, so certainly, um, as we progress through and through the consultation, uh, um, hopefully the residents, when they come forward, uh, those discussions will ensue with them.
Okay, that's good. Thank you very much.
Uh, just a comment on the trees. I think you're going to have interesting comments from those four residents. Some want trees, some don't because that's where people hide behind the trees. And some want the view of the park. So it'll be uh interesting how that develops. Counselor DiCio Spagnolo.
Thank you. Um, just more of a comment. I I am in favor of the um ice rink. Um, I think it'll be a great attraction, not only for our residents, but it'll be a great tourist attraction as well. Um, and I also think that uh we will have no issue in finding um some developers and some restaurants owners to come to La Salle. I've had some uh many inquiries actually of some restaurants who would like to come to La Salle. Um, and I think this will be a great uh fit and a great location for them uh to fit their needs as well as just to fill up the the space and just think it's a great idea. So I'm definitely in favor of that. I'm also in favor of using the the grant money to uh fulfill the uh ba- not basketball, the volleyball as well as the tennis courts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. I think it's a real nice of you to volunteer to take on the commercial project on Front Road. Just kidding. Counselor Renault.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, I too wanted to uh express my support in the ice and splash pad uh opportunity. Um, I think the idea is that that will give us a little bit more of an immediate uh uh presence and bang for the buck uh for the majority of people and majority of families. Um, I do know I have reached out to some of the fishing community and boating community and and yes, they do want a new ramp. Um, very few um have said they didn't want a new ramp, uh, but most of them do realize that um there was a fair amount of work that has been done uh in the last year or two uh to get things back up to snuff and that waiting a couple of years wouldn't be a horrible thing. Um, so you know, in looking at the two options, I mean, they're they're both great options for different people. I think that one option would basically really help out for two months out of the year, whereas the other one um is going to give uh a lot more, including that whole economic spin. And you know, you put that ice down there, people are going to want to get those commercial businesses open ASAP. Um, I personally uh make a mean hot chocolate. Um, so I will uh put my name in the fold when it comes. So thank you very much.
Well, Counselor Renault, you're going to have to take a backseat to a parlor location going there. Counselor Akpada.
The last thing about going last, your worship, is you can sum up very, very quickly. Um, I agree with my colleagues about the ice and all of my questions have been have been answered. I do have one, uh, and it it it's maybe a proposed square foot return on investment. Uh, so whether it's uh Mr. Miller or uh our C A O, do we have some proposed ROI on each square foot of commercial that we're looking to get? Uh, or or is that just a a little bit too far ahead uh in the process?
Yeah, maybe I'll just jump in and then Mr. Miller can follow up. I I don't think that we have that type of data at this point. We we have heard from members of council as well as individually uh as a many of uh many of our management team has contacts within the uh the inter- uh the um commercial industries and development interest industries that that there is a lot of interest for folks to be down in this area and and we can see why. I I mean, it if this will be a destination point, this will, uh, you know, we've heard a lot of a lot of commentary over the years as to why we can't get restaurants to locate in La Salle, uh, why and and to a greater extent. And so uh this will be certainly that generator. And I think that even beyond this particular site which we control now, this is a uh, uh, again, uh, in our conversations internally, uh, when we look at the site on, i- if you look at the the report and and the site in its entirety, it it looks small. Uh, but when you get out there and you look and you stand in the Westport Marina uh back lot and you look to the left and look to the right and see how far we own, uh, it is a massive site. Um, and so uh what may look small uh is is actually quite large when you start to get out there. Uh, so we we but we do hear uh quite often the 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 idea that uh commercial on this area would be very advantageous. We also feel that once we start down this path, uh, commercial all the way along the Front Road District will all will all benefit. Uh, but I don't think that we've gone down the path of the ROI just yet, uh, but I will turn to perhaps uh uh, Mr. Miller and Mr. McDonald. Maybe they have a little bit more to add on that.
Uh, no, your worship's through you. I I I think the CEO is correct. We haven't really gone down that um, road just yet. We wanted to make sure as part of the first part of the planning process that we have an area set aside that can certainly accommodate that commercial component. Certainly, as we move forward now and interest starts to come forward, we can start to examine that in a little more detail. Excuse me, report back to council and on what those opportunities may look like and what a return may look like. And I think the other thing that we paid, uh, it is noted in the C A noted, and I've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Salani is that this will not only help spur development, perhaps in that commercial block that's rate part of this development, but also on Front Road is the larger piece. And what we can, what can we do under the Planning Act as part of community improvement plans to make uh Front Road more desirable for uh for businesses to locate in that area. So we will be following up with that. Uh, we always knew that this was kind of a multi-pronged uh uh project that was going to involve not only you know, architects and engineers uh, but from the planning side, from the road diet side, the larger um front road area, not just being confined to these six or seven blocks by the park, but what does it do to the entire front road area and and how do we enhance commercial opportunities along the whole stretch?
Thank you, Kevin.
As I said, it's it's an impressive project and to the team, I I I like the forethought. I like the phased approach. I like the numbers. You know, and it's one of these things that uh from the very beginning to draw people down to Front Road to, as Mr. Miller just said, bring specific commercial, revitalize and engagement. I I think the team uh has done an outstanding job. It's impressive. It's simple to understand. And like I said, uh, congratulations to everyone who's put so much effort into getting it to this point.
Thank you. No more council questions? Okay, so you see the recommendation. One is council provide direction for the preferred option regarding phase two B. Either option with Marina slash boat launch or the option of the water ice feature. I think the ice feature is unanimous. Is that correct? Everybody's nodding. Okay. And that council endorsed the filing of the COVID resiliency grant for rebuilding the sports courts as part of phase two A. Everybody's good with that. Any questions? Counselor Renault.
Um, just for a point of order, I will make um the motion to uh move forward with the ice water feature.
Okay, do we need one recommendation for both, Joe? Can we do both or you want each separate?
I think that uh, again, i- if we could get a recommendation on separately, that would probably be uh just as easy to to flow through.
Okay, so moved by Counsel Renault, one on recommendation number one that we're going with the water ice feature as opposed to the Marina boat launch. Second by Counselor Erdicio Spagnolo, all in favor. That carries unanimously. Thank you. And number number two, we have a mover for the Counselor Dejarle. Support. Deputy Mayor Milos, sorry, I couldn't see your hand there. All in favor. That carries unanimously. Again, thank you. Uh, Joe, just for point of order, are we in symmetry with what we um passed at our council meeting? Or do we have to do a request for reconsideration?
Uh, again, I I would maybe ask uh uh, Mr. Miller, who has, he's a little more familiar with the uh, the the uh deputy clerk role than I am uh, in terms of, and I do believe that Ms. Jean is on the line as well, just in terms of the the procedural side, but I think we're okay, but I will just confer with them.
Are you worship? I did have a, we did have a little chat with this and they've been chatting and I think we're okay and just adding it as an extension to the uh resolution that was passed back in October.
Okay, perfect. So we need this.
Unless Linda wants to jump in and slap my hand.
Thank you, Noah. I agree with Mr. Miller.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So before we go to confirmatory bylaw, I have to say thank you, Kevin. I know um we have you on for special projects, but I think you're working on the special project. Um, Colin, great work. I'm assuming we're going to move to public consultation ASAP so we can get moving with these items and um we'll see what we can do. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Um, we need a, Mr. Miller.
I just wanted to uh thank JP Thompson. They've been uh uh really integral and part of this and coming forward a lot of uh good ideas and working with our staff. So looking forward to continue working with them to uh uh, see this project get to the finish line at some point.
We we like to see the starting first, then we'll get to the finish. I want to make sure I'm still around. Yes, Linda, confirmatory bylaw, you're making sure I do that.
That's right. Thank you.
I'm reading your mind. I got it. Okay, we'll do confirmatory bylaw on the first reading. Counselor Dejarle and Counselor Carrick, all in favor? That carries second reading. Counselor Deputy Mayor Milos and Counselor Erdicio Spagnolo, all in favor? That carries and Counselor Akpada never put his hand hand down yet. So third reading, Counselor Akpada, Counselor Renault, all in favor? That carries. Before we adjourn, this might be the last time I see many of you. I know I'm going to see Joe or at least talk to him tomorrow and probably every day till Christmas. Um, Kevin, Colin probably won't see you and everybody else who's online that I only see their names. Take this time to spend it with your family. Enjoy and remember what we're going through and hopefully we see everybody next year all alive, well and safe. So take time, stay healthy.